Hey, everybody. I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the Borough of Gettysburg, Borough Council for March 10th, 2025. Before we begin tonight, we will start with our usual moment of silence and the pledge. I'd like to ask you all to keep a couple of our neighbors in your thoughts tonight as we have our moment of silence. The first was Leonard Andrews, who served on the Borough Council for two terms and passed recently. He was a good friend and neighbor to the borough, serving both on council as well as on the zoning commission. And I'd also like you to keep in your thoughts Lee Weaver, who was a citizen who passed a couple of weeks ago, who dedicated a fair amount of her volunteer time to the borough. She had keen interests in history and genealogy, and she volunteered with the planning department doing research and was so valuable that the mayor Troxel had declared July 10th, 2012, Lee Weaver Day. So please spare a moment in your thoughts or your prayers, however you're inclined, for our neighbors and friends who've left us. If you wouldn't mind joining me, please.
Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment and the terms and conditions of employment of current borough employees; and Two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. At this time, I'd take a motion, please, to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of February 10th, 2025, the joint council meeting with the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority, the council special business meeting, and the council work session held on February 24th, 2025, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, corrections, omissions, or errors? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We're going to start tonight with a special presentation, and I would like everybody pleased to welcome our co-responder, Mackenzie Johnson. Mackenzie works with the Police Department, has been working closely with us for more than two years now, and is doing some really impressive and important work on behalf of the borough in cooperation with MHIDD and the Police Department. So, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Mackenzie. I am the co-responder here with Gettysburg Borough, also the rest of the west side of Adams County. As the co-responder, I assist alongside law enforcement to respond out on their mental health and behavioral health calls, along also drug and alcohol calls, domestic violence calls, pretty much anything and everything that they may determine that I would be beneficial to assist on. What that looks like is police predominantly making sure that the scene is safe for me to be on, and then me assessing risk for that individual, and then determining going forward what that individual would benefit from, whether that is outpatient services or a more restrictive type of treatment. Ultimate goal is to make sure that that individual receives least restrictive treatment initially. That looks like resources and referrals to start, and then going forward, me continuing to follow up with that consumer out in the community and building rapport with them going forward. Ultimately, the goal is that that consumer and I can build a relationship, and they can reach out to me as needed, or I can reach out to them and continue following up with them, and either diverting them from that restrictive treatment, and mostly, the biggest goal is to divert them from the criminal justice system. So, this past year, 2024, was, I would say, very successful. I had, two-thirds of my contacts in 2024 were diverted to community-based services. The rest were sent to a more restrictive treatment, so to the hospital, and then sent to inpatient treatment. One-third of those contacts occurred here within the borough, and nearly half of all of my contacts were completed on my own without police involvement. So what that looks like is either follow-ups with the consumer, the consumer having direct contact with me, so they reached out to me and initiated that contact, or assist from other agencies. So, private agencies reached out to me for a consumer in need, and I reached out to them. So, within 2024, we also added a second co-responder to Adams County, and we were able to split the county in half. He took the east side. I remained here on the west side. So, overall, I think the program is going very, very well. I'm very grateful to be here at the borough and getting to work with officers here. They're all fantastic. They've all welcomed me with open arms, and they're all great in these crisis situations. So, I couldn't be more thankful to be here and getting to work in this environment. So, that's what's going on with the co-responder program.
Great. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the program, this started a couple of years ago. This is a partnership with not only York Adams MHIDD and our Police Department, as well as other municipal police departments here in the county, but also with Wellspan, who, and Chief, jump in if I say any of this wrong, were the, some of the primary funders for the program for the first two years. It was questionable whether the funding for this program was going to be able to continue this year, and I think we're all really grateful to see that it did. It wasn't too long ago that a lot of us were sharing a lot of concerns about how certain folks fare when they are in a mental health crisis, and the only tool we have available to us is the criminal justice system. Chief Glenny has been instrumental in helping institute this program here in Gettysburg. He's been a great supporter of it. I believe he would have gone to the mat this year to find that funding to keep this position going, because I don't want to speak for you, but the...
I would have, and if I could just interject for a second. There's apparently a question arising again about funding to continue the program even maybe later this year. I mean, we've not heard anything definite on that regard yet, but this program, Mackenzie sells herself short. She is one of the most diligent people I have ever seen in dealing with these consumers that need help, and, you know, even the most restrictive stuff of the inpatient, the inpatient treatment, Mackenzie will work the phones and make contacts and try to assure that there are beds available for these people that, two years ago, frankly, we didn't get. We would take them to the hospital, and they would be released back into the community, and now Mackenzie's finding them help. And it's really, it's more of a, I've spoke before and other things about permanent solutions rather than Band-Aids. That's what this is. This is a permanent solution to some of these issues, rather than running out and throwing a Band-Aid on something which we can't do. And Mackenzie is just incredibly good with it, and she is, you know, I can't sing her praises enough. So, you know, we may have to take up that funding challenge again, but I am more than willing to do it. I'm more than willing to champion the program because it's an incredible program. And it saves, you know, in the long run, not only does it, I'll say, save an individual that needs that mental health help, but it also saves an incredible amount of time, putting it on the front end so that we don't have to, you know, throw another Band-Aid on it and come back tomorrow.
Is there concern that some of the funding models might be drying up from the federal level, or why is there a concern?
So, I am not 100% positive, because I just heard about some of this today, but I don't think it's going to dry up from the federal level. I think there'll probably be grants out there, I think is the open word. But I think that, I think with, along with many other fields, there's an issue with getting qualified folks to do these positions. And I think what we're finding, at least in this area, is that our mobile crisis, which is a different animal, excuse the acronym, I mean, our co-responder's not mobile crisis. She's there to, and she acts in that regard, but she's with us. She's with the police. She is to, you know, doing those things with us, and to take and put her in the place of mobile crisis then takes our co-responder away. We had mobile crisis before. We didn't have a co-responder. And I think that what's happening, or what may be happening, is there's just so many openings in that, available in that field, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that they need to fill those positions. And, you know, I don't want to see her stolen and put in a mobile crisis, is what I'm trying to say.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Thoughts on that?
No, not currently.
Not currently.
Does anybody here on council have any questions about the program?
I would just like to say thank you, Mackenzie, for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And just for those, you know, our neighbors and residents here who are watching, if there was anyone who needed help or to reach out to you for resources, what is the best way for them to do that?
So, they can reach out to County Dispatch. I have a County Dispatch number. It's 641. Since I'm not on a 24/7 service, that's probably the best way to reach me, because I get put in, like, their dispatch system, and they can let me know that I have a call once I'm back on duty. That way, they don't feel like they're being ignored if I don't answer my telephone. Dispatch can let them know that I'm not on duty, and I will call them back when I'm back on duty. That way, they just don't feel like someone's not listening to them in that moment. That's the best way. And then also, I do have business cards, too, and I do have a work telephone that they can reach me at as well. I just prefer the dispatch route, because then someone is being answered by someone when they call, and just by chance that I'm not working at the time that they do call, they're being answered by someone.
Any incident that we get called on that has any type of mental health connotation to it, Mackenzie will accompany us if she's working. And her hours currently...
Wednesday through Saturday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Sometimes that changes, just based on my schedule, but for the most part, it's always Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to 10:00.
But if somebody would like to get in touch with Mackenzie or is having a mental health issue, please dial the 8101-911, whatever the case may be, and, you know, we'll respond. If Mackenzie's not available, you know, we will attempt to afford resources that we can. We'll get ahold of Mackenzie, and we do have contact information. So, but if it's during those hours, chances are...
I'm always answering my phone.
The importance of diverting folks out of the criminal justice system when the issue that they're having is not necessarily criminal is immense. You know, not every mental health crisis is a criminal act. Not every substance abuse episode is a criminal act, and connecting people with resources often can prevent somebody from finding themselves in the system downstream. I think what you do is extraordinarily valuable. And the reason I say all that is, I'd like all of my colleagues here to keep this in mind. We have a tool that we didn't have for three or four years ago, and it's a tool that provides people better outcomes. And should there come a day where there isn't funding for that, we're going to have to make decisions as to whether that's something we want to continue or not. And, you know, we may be able to look to other community partners, perhaps organizations that work with mental health, or with young people who might be in danger of abusing substances, who might have a difficult time connecting with services, and if that is something that we continue to value, we may need to create a funding stream for that. So, does anybody have any other questions for Mackenzie or for the Chief?
Yeah, I would just like to thank you, too, Mackenzie, and I would like to echo what Matt just said. We want to keep you as long as possible.
Thank you.
I hope you're really loving what you do here.
I am. I'd like to stay as long as possible.
That's great to hear, and I think we'd pull out all the stops to make that happen. So, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question. Well, thank you. I certainly appreciate what you do. I know, as a teacher, we see crisis in the classroom, crisis outside of the classroom. So, my question is whether or not your consumers are children, or are you just basically helping the adults who find themselves in mental health crisis? Is there a different program or system in which a minor would?
I would say it's a variety of...
Okay.
Every age.
Every age. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. I'd say it's not one or the other.
So, just to make it clear for the public that if someone, you know, is a teenager and they're in crisis, they could also reach out to you. It's good to know. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
Mackenzie is, for lack of a better term, a bridge to those mental health resources. So, it doesn't matter what mental health resources you want to look for, whether they're, you know, children, teenagers, adolescents, adults. She's that bridge, and, you know...
Age doesn't matter. Yep.
She's, it's a lot smoother ride over that bridge most of the time than it is over the law enforcement bridge. So, it's...
All right.
Yeah. Again, thank you for what you do. Chief, will you keep us updated as you hear more about any potentials of losing any funding that we may need to work some type of magic and make it happen?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
All right. Unless you have any final statements here?
I don't think so.
I hope you feel the gratitude in the room for what you're doing, and also, Chief, thank you for constantly championing this program, and thanks for coming and talking to us today.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, folks. That's going to take us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items that appear on tonight's agenda. We ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence, and we ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. If you'd like to speak on a subject that's not on tonight's agenda, we're going to ask you to wait till the second public comment section at the end of the meeting. Is there any public comment about tonight's agenda? All right. I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on. Okay. We're going to start current and old business tonight in the planning department with Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided electronically. Not much to report on at this time. The planning commission is still going through the planning, the zoning ordinance. In particular, we're going to be providing some changes to the proposed map, so we should have those online early next week, with the goal of hopefully having a review and approval, or a recommendation for approval occurring in April. At least, that's what staff is going to be recommending with this process. Additionally, the materials provided to council, the 2024 annual report. In that document, we were able to see that we did have increases in building, construction permitting, the total improvement values for permits occurring in the borough. Additionally, there were an increase in the number of land use permits compared to the prior years, and there was also a, we're getting an increase in special event permits, and that's something we'll be exploring from a department level, but then probably bringing it to council for consideration with fees later at the end of the year. Other than that, if you have any questions, I can gladly take them.
Any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right. Thank you, sir. And that's going to take us to Mrs. English with Harb.
Thank you. My report is in your folder. We do have four motions on the agenda from our February Harb meeting. A few updates I have. We were invited to vend at the farmer's market in July for their Homestead and Sustainability Expo, so we will be there for some best management-type practices and our MS4 stormwater program, and talk to the public. And we're looking at probably doing some composting training with, if we get the grant funding for that, as well as some recycling information. The next paper shred event is scheduled for May 16th, and the e-cycle date events are May 17th and October 18th. We do have a field trip scheduled to Cumberland County Township, Robbie, Karen, and I, to look at how they're doing their hazardous waste drop-off. What they are doing is, they have a weigh machine, so anybody that comes in, they weigh specifically what they're bringing, and each person pays for that type of product. And they collect probably eight to 10 different products, but they also have a recycling center where they can line up people and go through. So, we're going to kind of go and see how they set that up, and see if that's something we can mimic here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Cool. Anybody have any questions for Deb? All right. Would anybody care to start making motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architecture Review Board, Harb, following its review on February 19, 2025, and accept the certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-250002, major project, 28 Breckenridge Street, Jace Upperman, for the front door replacement project to include a solid mahogany front door in brown stain with a six-glass panel on the top and solid wood panel on the bottom, and a black trim full glass storm door. COA-240075, major project, 29 West Middle Street, Erica James LLC, for the window replacement project to include the replacement of the six deteriorated historic windows with EN 600 series Provia double pane windows without grids and any color in the non-white spectrum pending that the color choice be submitted to Harb. COA-25004, major project, 785 Baltimore Street, Rebecca Brown, for the rear stairway replacement to the main house and the repair to the rear garage to include the replacement of the rear stairways and landings to the main house with pressure-treated wood and repainted, and the repair of the main rear garage to include the both internal work and adding new exterior barn doors, rebuilt windows, and repainted exterior facade. COA-2400281, major project, 150 Carlisle Street, CityMart, revised proposal for the exterior renovations and second-floor rear addition to include the removal of a rear shed in filling the southwest corner footprint, selective demolition of a basement stair enclosure, and the restoration and painting of the metal facade panels.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question regarding, looks like the first, no, not sure if it's the first or second, regarding COA-240075, major project, 29 West Middle, in regards to the language here about pane windows without grids and any color in the non-white spectrum pending that the color choice be submitted to Harb. My question there is, I wasn't aware that Harb had anything to do with the color choices. Is this just a request to submit it for them to look at? It's not necessarily a...
On permanent features, they do look at color, but on more temporary features, they don't. So, maybe a siding or a permanent window that's going to be on the structure for 20 to 30 years, they do kind of take into consideration some of the coloring to fit into this, with the historic character of the community. But painting wood surfaces or things like that could be easily changed. So, those type of things, they would not consider a permanent type feature.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those motions carry. That takes us to the parking department, Ms. Fissell.
Good evening. You should all have my report. I have the comparisons as normal, and then just some things I'd like to point out. There were 47 total LPPs purchased for February. Twenty-one of those were the quarterly lease, so that is a favorable option. There are, we are down to nine reserved parking spaces in the garage. Some of the businesses over the winter have chosen to, that they, they're not doing business. There are as many as employees, so they have let me know that they will be doing that again, more in the future. Come April, probably, they said, but for right now, it is lower than normal. I have my calls and emails. This month, I had almost five, or February, I had almost 500 total calls and emails to return, and I have had a few meetings with Ms. Sanders regarding the options for meters, kiosks, things like that. So, we're still in talks with that and trying to do some research. And then I also am still working with Trista regarding the reprogramming of the handheld. They're running into some issues, but they're still working on it on their end.
I'm sure they are. Excellent. Alicia, will you keep me abreast of how that's going, the conversations with what's possible with meters as well? Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fissell?
I do. Do you get, does the parking department get phone calls, complaints, or questions regarding, I mean, I'm sure you do, but specifically, but specifically about, like, that the app isn't working, or is it just maybe, I hear it from time to time, and I'm like, I personally have never had an issue with it, but, so I don't know if it's a user error, or if it's just sometimes there's a glitch, and they're paying, they're trying to pay, and it's not accepting it? Do you get calls like that, that say, it's what's going on?
Almost daily, but they're, for many different reasons. I would say, most of the time, it's because people are paying for their wrong license plate.
Okay.
There are people that, for some reason, their service isn't great downtown, and they get, like, a processing scrolling. I've had a couple of those, not many. And then there's also those ones that went to the scam websites that I believe Chief, back in October, had alerted people to as well. So, I get that as well, but...
Okay.
In general, no. And a lot of the times, it's user error and walking them through. They didn't complete a transaction, and they thought they did, but they didn't hit that final process button. So, then I walk them through it and explain it to them, and so...
What were to happen if a consumer was, if that's the right word, using the app, say, on the first block of Lincoln, anywhere in the first block of Lincoln Square, on a street meter, and those street meters technically stop at 8:00, and they're paying after that? Does the app stop, or does it continually take their money?
No. The app will stop at 8:00 PM. It is programmed to stop. So, if you pay, though, at 7:30 PM, it's going to make you pay the minimum of an hour, but it will stop your time at 8:00, because it's free after 8:00. The same thing on Sunday. If you pay at 11:00, it'll actually start your time starting at 1:00. Or through the week, if you pay at 6:00 AM, it's going to start your time when that meter starts. That's why you need to put the correct zone in, because that determines the hours and the rate.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Can we go to Mr. Harbaugh now at Public Works?
Good evening. Hopefully, you received my report. Couple highlights on my report. We will be starting our spring sweeping, street sweeping. We actually started this week, and we'll be going around town, sweeping the streets up from the ANSCID and debris that's from over the winter, now that the temperatures are nice. We're also doing agility meetings with the agility program that we belong to, to start coordinating projects. And one of those projects is their spring sweeping, along with our alley restorations for this summer, and their projects that they're planning. Those projects will start between March and September, and then will be, they'll be spread out throughout those months to be able to complete those projects. Something that is not on my report to you, it just happened last week. We have a fueling system down at our Public Works building that has... We have a fueling system down at our Public Works building that has underground tanks in. We have a diesel tank and we have an unleaded tank. We were doing, last week we were doing some testing for the required three-year cert, certification for the tanks. Ran into some issues testing, which required us to empty the tank to be able to do some more testing. Unable to find out what the problem is just yet. We thought we had a solution figured out, but that solution did not work over the weekend. So we had to pump the tank back out again today. And so the tank is going to be out of service probably for a good three to four weeks. Until we, and it may be, it may become out of permit if we can't repair it. This is not a release into the environment, so everybody knows this. It's, it's an inter-tank system and that is the issue. And we just, we're trying to come up with a situation to fix it. If not, we're going to have to abandon the tank.
All right. Thank you for the update. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? All right. I'm not seeing any. We will move to Mr. Claybaugh, the engineer.
Good evening, Council. You have a copy of my written report. I do have a couple of, of highlights for you. And there are two motions on your agenda with regards to those highlights. On the bottom of the first page, I give you an update on the channel wall assessment. That's the Stevens Run Channel Walls. Of course, I did the presentation at your workshop a few weeks ago. And there is a motion on the table tonight to authorize a solicitor, myself, to start the evaluation of the, the right of way and easements for those priority areas that were on that list that I provided to you. We're looking at just those three areas for, for the time being. And then the other thing that, that will go along with that effort is we're going to start looking into grant application efforts and opportunities. There's a couple of different grant applications that are out there with that. We'll be working with Deborah on chasing that down. Part of the, the right of way ownership discussion and, and the need for that is to determine the ownership so that we can apply for grants. So that, I wanted to just make sure that that was clear, that those two things are going together. But that is the update on that. On the second page, I give you an update on the Gateway Connectivity Project. Just today, we had, you may have seen us walking with about, there's about 30 people in vests and hard hats and with PennDOT. And we walked the entire corridor of the Gateway Connectivity Project. I thought it was very well received from PennDOT. Some of the takeaways that we, you know, we started at the top of the hill with the National Park Service. They were there. They were a little bit concerned about the speed tables. That was one of the components that was identified for traffic calming. So it sounds like they're not going to go for the speed tables and we're going to have to come up with something different there to try, to calm the traffic. So we're working on that with them. The National Park Service was a little bit concerned about some of the decorative streetlights that we had proposed at the top of the hill by the cemetery. So we're working with that. That was, that was two of the main concerns at, at that end. And then when we got pretty much everything else through the middle of the corridor, PennDOT was happy with. Of course, they had some input and some questions about, you know, sequence of construction, that kind of thing. But whenever we got to the square, when we, we presented the option of, of potentially repurposing the parking, they didn't really have any objections and they actually made a comment about it being a little safer without having parking there. So they seemed to be in favor of it. Didn't sound like there was any hurdles from that, from their, from their side of things. We, we ended the meeting with basically that, that the scoping documents are going to get approved. There's this 30-page scoping document that we had to go through today. And we're basically permitted to go into those meetings with the property owners. You, you heard us present this chicken and an egg thing. We had to get PennDOT's approval before we could start meeting with the property owners. We basically got that today. So Jill and Charles and I are going to be scheduling those meetings promptly. We did have one meeting, Jill, thanks to Jill, she pulled together some of the property owners. I did come to that meeting. We kind of just heard from them and listened to some of their concerns. But we're going to have some more formal meetings in the next couple of months, at least two meetings where we can hear from business owners on, on that, that topic of, of the parking on the square. So more to come on that soon. And then the last thing is an update on the Gettysburg Interloop B2 project. This week concludes the, the utility part of that project. All the utility work should be done by Friday. There may be some final paving that might spill into next week. But this Friday marks the end of their contract. So on Friday, I'll be issuing a substantial completion. We do have an application for payment on your agenda for that. There's, I'm sparing you the detail. There's, there's 70 some bit items that is incorporated into that. But the bottom line is that the total contracts, 1,071,000 and this payment takes them up to about 966,000. So you can see that we're getting close to the end of the contract. The final payment, and I'll give you more detail at the final payment next month, we'll have one change order to balance all of the quantities out. Pretty much this application that you're seeing tonight doesn't include any change orders. It's just contract items. So again, I'll spare you the details unless you have any questions with that. I also want to add that the next two phases of this project have been initiated. We have a contract with Kinsley. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting with them within the next week or two here. So as soon as York Excavating leaves from the utility work, we're hoping to come in immediately and start putting all the sidewalks back. And then the final stage of this, we are still finalizing some of the portal documents that you need for the C2P2. That's the DCNR portion of this thing. And I'll be putting that out to bid within the next month. I did get an authorization from you guys back in the middle of the, of the summer last year before we broke this into three projects to bid this thing. So I'm just reminding you of that, that, that that part of this project will go out to bid within the next couple of weeks and we'll be opening bids, I believe, next month for, for that portion of it.
So when you say that the paving will be substantially complete, does that mean that the entire roadway will be repaved? Or does that just mean what we have dug out is filled back in pending later work that needs to be done?
The latter. Yeah.
They'll still have rough surfaces there.
The substantial completion is just for the utility work component. And the paving that we're doing is, is temporary or intermediate, we're calling it paving. We don't want to spend a whole lot of money making it, because at the end of the day, probably in July, the whole street will get repaved. But we won't do that until all of the new curbs and sidewalks are put in.
And the new curbs and sidewalks, like in front of Ice House, et cetera, that is this, this next phase or the third phase?
That's this next phase. The Ice House area is the next phase. So south of the, of the railroad tracks. There's a little bit that goes to the north of the railroad, railroad tracks on this next phase, but most of it is in front of the Ice House. And then the last phase of it finishes up to Constitution with the sidewalks and does all of the paving.
Great. Any other questions?
Unless there's something wrong with my computer, I do not have a report in my folder.
No, I don't either.
But thank you for your thorough report as usual.
I'll, I'll double check with Sarah. We'll make sure we get it circulated.
Yeah. A number of us have been having issues with the OneDrive syncing, so I wasn't sure if it was just my computer. So thanks for bringing that up.
Sure.
Any other questions for Chad? All right. We've got a couple motions there. Would anybody care to make the first?
Make a motion to approve application for payment number six to York Excavating Company in amount of 267,573 and 78 cents for the North Washington Street Water and Storm Project as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. And our second motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Borough staff, including the Borough Engineers, CS Davidson, Inc. and the Borough Solicitor to commence research on four priority areas as indicated and identified on the Stevens Run Channel Wall Inventory spreadsheet to procure information review and evaluate property ownership and the easements and right of way necessary for the performance of repair, maintenance and rehabilitation work on the indicated channel walls.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any last minute questions for Mr. Claybaugh? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Chief Glenny.
Good evening. My report was uploaded. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. Couple of things I'd like to touch on outside of that. First of all, I'd like to commend Robbie for his work on this, this fuel tank issue. It's a kind of an important thing for the police department to have fuel. I don't like the police cars getting down below half a tank. You don't want to run out of gas somewhere. And Robbie was Johnny on the spot, got us an alternate fueling source and is working on a more permanent alternate fueling source. And I really appreciate the way he jumped on that and, and got it done. So thank you very much, Robbie. Appreciate it much. Within the police department, we've been having some issues with email. One person not receiving email, they would pop on the screen and then they would disappear. After multiple attempts, I think that Trista has finally got that issue corrected. Also have an issues with our current copier fax machine not receiving faxes. It gets fixed briefly and then goes back out and not receive faxes. We do currently have a new copier order. It's leased, so the lease is up, so we have a new copier order, but I'm, I'm hoping that corrects the problem when we get that. It was, one of my favorite events happened in February. It was, I'd like to once again, thank from the bottom of my heart Wendy Allen for inviting the police department to the Lincoln Birthday Celebration on the square. I love seeing the kids and, and the preschoolers and, you know, saying, singing happy birthday to President Lincoln and, and the talk. It was myself, Sergeant Evans, Officer Worthen, Officer Boz and the mayor were down. One of my favorite things we do every year. And they, she had to postpone it this year, but we were able to make the, the, the date. So for watching Wendy, thank you. Please continue to invite us because I love it. The, we had some issues with some concrete with the, the project that Chad has talked about. We were able to get one of our auxiliary officers to, as we like to joke, and we say in the police department, go watch concrete dry. So he's done that a couple nights and then we have a date, I think this upcoming week, we're going to do a pour that we're going to watch concrete dry again. But I'd like to thank him for making himself available to come in and do that. And beyond that, I would be happy to answer any questions in the report.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
I don't have a, a question per se, but a, a thank you for, and you don't have to go into detail about it, but the incident at the hospital. Thank you for the department doing what, what you need to do to keep us safe and your work with the other departments as well. Quite scary, but handled well from, from all accounts, from what I've been, what I've been told.
I appreciate that. And I, I did want to touch on that a little bit. I can't say a lot because of the healthcare involved and things like that. But within minutes, we had that hospital campus secure. And I, I will say that when we got there, kudos to hospital security. They had all the, the entrance ways locked and covered by one of their security folks. And I can't say enough for the assistance offered from the state police and other surrounding areas. We had that, I was comfortable with the way, with, like I said, within minutes that the, the entire Gettysburg, Wellspan Gettysburg Hospital campus was, was safe. I would at this time, since you brought it up, like to commend Officer Brian Holden and Detective Brian Whitekirk for their work during that incident in, in, in dealing with that individual. And just, just a great job all around by all the officers that, that went. So I'd like to thank my department, Sergeant Pruy, they, and I, I've got some good feedback too. I mean, obviously there's some things that, that can improve, but I was happy with all's well that ends well.
I have no doubt that you, that all of our officers go through strenuous training on things. And as, as they say about everything, you can have as much training as you want and then when it happens and you're in it, a lot of it goes out the door. But even though it was an unfortunate incident that, that had happened at all, I feel like it also was an opportunity. We look at organizational structuring, SWAT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats to build ourselves better as organizations. And when, when these things unfortunately that do happen, it does allow for our officers to get real, real experience in the moment of it happening. And I think they did a great job.
Well, thank you. And, and I would, I would concur with that assessment and we do, we do train and train and train and, and practice. And the old adage, practice makes perfect is not true. Practice makes permanent. And when the fecal matter hits the oscillating blades, we know that, that, you know, that, that training shines and you're going to do what you're trained to do. And, and our officers, as well as those that came in to help, did phenomenally. So thank you for recognizing.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Yes. You're welcome.
Takes us to the Office of the Manager and the Treasurer, Ms. Stull.
State Ethics Commission forms. I know I handed those out. I've received some back. I'm still missing, I think, a few. So if you have those, get them to me within the next month or so. And if you misplaced yours, just let me know and I'll get you another one. And then also I wanted to report staff attended a training through Bartel last week. So all supervisors, administrative staff attended the all-day training last Tuesday. Everyone learned a lot about themselves. We were all given an assessment, which the assessment portfolio was like that. They went over all of our four temperament styles, our DISC, which is the driver, the influencer, the stabilizer and the conscientious. So all of staff really liked the training. They learned a lot about themselves and how to deal with people, other staff members, coworkers. And they had individual appointments, each one of them with the trainer that was here, the coach. And I believe he's going to come back possibly to complete because he wasn't finished with everyone yet. I would recommend that council consider, you know, doing a team training, you know, once a year, maybe bring him back next year. They used to do this many years ago. And, and it was good to, to have that training. So, and I think all of the staff that I've talked to would appreciate that if council would consider that. And if you want to see any of the information on it, I have stuff in my office. Feel free to just stop up or I'm sure Charles or Maddie would share some information with you.
All right. Excellent.
If I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gable.
In addition to my written report, just point out some of the financial considerations for the borough with our various borough funds. Currently there's 1.74 million dollars in our general fund bank account. A million of that is classified as reserves. So really the, the borough has about $740,000 in liquid cash to cover its expenses, its day-to-day operations. That will increase significantly in the next month and a half or two months as spring taxes will begin to be collected. You had just authorized the payment to York Excavating for Washington Street. That will come out of Fund 18, which is the Capital Projects Fund, currently $766,000 in that fund, which is then augmented for unrestricted capital projects in Fund 30, where there's $2.3 million. ARPA is always a consideration and remember, we always discuss that after next year, the ARPA money will be depleted. And so of the, the initial $3.1 million that the borough received in 2021, there is 428,000 left of that. So that will largely be allocated in fiscal year 2026 to draw all those funds down. Chad mentioned the Field View with PennDOT. It was a very enlightening conversation. Thank goodness that the weather today was gorgeous. Just fun fact, tomorrow is the anniversary of the Blizzard of 93. So it could be snowing today as well. But it was a very good, productive conversation, which really does lay the groundwork for community engagement moving forward, one-on-one with property owners. And Chad mentioned that we will be scheduling a larger general conversation with the public and more likely than not, we'll do that right here in this room simply because we have the audio visual capability to do that and then also have those televised for the folks that cannot attend. Those meetings, like Chad said, we're, we're, we're planning on doing two of them. And it's a brainstorming conversation type environment. So we're going to rearrange this room so that it's not so much more of a lecture style as opposed to, you know, configuration in conference style or semi-circle so that people are actually facing one another and have conversations and bat around ideas on design elements that would make sense or not make sense for various parts of the corridor, including Lincoln Square. The only other thing I have to mention is America 250 PA is very active. As you know, Jill Sellers and I are representatives for the borough of Gettysburg, but we're also serving in a capacity for Adams County. I'm the chair of the Subcommittee on Events. That Subcommittee is active and has met and has already approved 11 events. Those events will begin to be populated on Destination Gettysburg's website. So, I just mentioned that as a little bit of an update. 2026 is coming quicker than we realize. So, in the next few months, things are going to ramp up significantly as we plan for that momentous occasion here in Adams County and nationwide. With that, there are multiple motions. I'd be happy to discuss the motions at more length after they are made and seconded.
All right. Before we get into the motions, does anybody have any questions for Charles? All right. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We have COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Sita Grissom to be paid from the police pension plan effective February 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The MOU with Garmah.
I'll make a motion to authorize entry into Memorandum of Understanding MOU with the Gettysburg Area Retail Merchants Association Incorporated, Garmah, for a five-year term beginning in 2025 through the end of the holiday season of 2029, relative to the respective responsibilities of the borough and Garmah regarding the decoration of the borough for the holiday season, the free parking program for the holiday season, and the operating procedures for Garmah's semi-annual outdoor antique show. J. Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, execute, and attest the MOU on behalf of the borough.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have questions on, do we have any detail at all on the layout and plan for the semi-annual outdoor antique show, or is it going to be as it has been in the past?
So, there's a couple interesting adjustments on this MOU, this being one of them. Garmah has recognized that the footprint of their traditional antique show needs to change for a couple reasons, security being one, but also just the number of vendors that are decreasing in number a little each year and that they currently are just kind of scattered. So, you don't even realize necessarily that there's an antique show happening. So, they understand that and are looking to close the street and then consolidate all that activity onto a street closure, more like our other types of traditional festivals that we have across the borough. In addition to that, significant rewrite in this Memorandum of Understanding as it relates to the nexus between tree lighting and the Christmas Festival. It's already been announced that Tubafest, largely driven by security requirements, has shifted that program from the second week in December, which will now coincide with the first day or the opening day of the Christmas Festival, because the Christmas Festival has already incurred the costs for securing street closures. Similarly, the tree lighting will also move to the first opening day of the Christmas Festival. This is a really exciting opportunity because now you will not only have a tree lighting as the Christmas Festival opens, but you'll also have that followed immediately by a concert essentially on the square. So, you have a tree lighting followed by exciting programming, which will drive a lot of business downtown. And coincidentally, one of Garmah's initiatives is the promotion of First Friday. The opening of Christmas Festival is always on a First Friday. So, this is exciting partnerships with multiple organizations throughout the community. It helps them achieve security at a cost that they can afford to do. And it also obviously adds to the larger programming of the Christmas Festival weekend.
Does that involve a full closure of the square?
It would not. It would be the traditional footprint of the two southern quads.
For the tree lighting?
For the tree lighting, correct.
Okay. Any questions?
I think that's great. I really appreciate it when organizations can collaborate together and make something wonderful for the town. Helps with expenses, helps bring people downtown. Safety, our police department always taking care of us and the public works doing all that they do for those events. So, kudos to Garmah and Main Street and the borough for getting together to make that all happen and Tubus. Thank you. Ben Jones.
We did the motion in the second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. The next motion, please.
I'll make the motion authorizing the borough of Gettysburg to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Adams for the fiscal year 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Administration. Rita C. Freeling, Gettysburg Borough Mayor, J. Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, just a quick point of clarification. Ms. Sanders sent me an email over the weekend saying, "Is the 2023 date correct?" Or is there a typo in the motion? It is a correct number, correct year. Adams County Planning Office administers the CDBG program on behalf of the borough. And the program year and the execution year are always never aligned. So, we are now dealing with 2023 funds. And then next year, the motion will be 2024 for, you know, when you're approving it in 2026, so.
Thank you for that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Then we have a couple appointments for ABCs.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 031025-1, appointing Baird Tipton as an alternate member of the zoning hearing board on the borough of Gettysburg to complete the remainder of the three-year term of office of Jennifer Yablonsky, which term expires in January 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the last one.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 031025-2, appointing Barry Bernas as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Code Enforcement Appeals Board for a five-year term of office expiring in March 2030.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. That takes us to our liaison reports. And we'll start this evening with Jill Sellers and Main Street Gettysburg.
Thank you. Good evening. I have my report. Just a couple comments and a few things going on. If you haven't heard, Patriot Rail has been awfully busy here in Gettysburg. So, the rail station on North Washington Street, they're targeting this summer to start those rail excursions. So, watch for more information on that. We're really excited about what they're doing. They're reaching out into the community to businesses, organizations, really wanting to get involved and make this an incredible attraction here, I think. So, it's right now going to be running sort of like the day-one battle out to the west, but everyone loves a train. So, stay tuned. As Charles mentioned about America 250 PA, Main Street Gettysburg is the Community Engagement Committee. So, anyone that wants to get involved with the community, we're looking for opportunities to get our students involved, different civic groups, you know, scouting groups, and anyone else that has a way to make sure that this commemoration is really special and connected to our different community groups that can take advantage of this reason to celebrate and learn through this opportunity. Christmas Festival, of course, we're, you know, we're always talking about Christmas year-round. It's just a thing. So, the coordination with Garmah, just to comment real quick, this has been something that is, I think, super exciting for the Christmas Festival and with Tubafest. So, these discussions have been going on for a couple of years and probably long before me. And I'm really pleased at how that has happened. So, the logistics and the setup continue under discussion. So, we have the footprint of what the festival looks like, how the temporary traffic lights work, where the barricades are. So, safety will be obviously the first consideration. And we're going to have to adjust some things of how the festival looks in order to incorporate these new entertainment, you know, activities. And really excited that it gives us a good kickoff event and really is going to help us reach into our local community to bring them downtown. The Christmas Festival reaches people hundreds of miles outside of Gettysburg. They come for the weekend. It's a destination. But really, looking forward to having lots of locals come, join us downtown for something that I think is incredibly special and doesn't happen in every downtown. The Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, I didn't get a hard hat or a vest today, so I didn't feel like I was part of the group. But anyway, we did have a really productive meeting. So, to reiterate, no decisions have been made. This scoping Field View is, you know, your first step in this direction after 10-plus years of going down this road, no pun intended. We are inching our way that way. We're looking forward to public meetings. I did have a meeting that I invited local businesses to. It was pretty well-attended. About 18 business owners and managers showed up. And we just talked about the process, the status, the grant applications, and all the really nitty-gritty things that go into things like approving a 2023 CDBG in 2025. If you're not in those meetings constantly, they get incredibly confusing. So, I'm hoping to provide some clarification that this is a slow roll and we'll stay on top of it and try to keep everyone well-informed. I have a couple of things exciting about the Gettysburg Welcome Center. The Section 106 process, we've finished all four steps of the mitigation process. What that means is that we're moving towards release of the Congressional Appropriation Funding for Construction. So, stay tuned for next steps on that. But there will be a period of the, you know, the notices that have to go out, the public notices. And there will be a 15-day public comment period for that before those funds will be released. So, that has been a couple of years in the making. So, we're getting towards the finish line on that, which means, you know, every new beginning has an ending of something else. So, we're ending that period and we're going to be starting a construction period. So, I'm hoping that that is coming in 2025 so we can be ready for 2026. So, on that note, I need to make a big shout out to our donors in the community who helped us reach the $100,000 Wareheim Grant. So, I'm pleased to report that we have met that match, which means that our endowment fund is going to be well over $300,000. So, as I've said before, that's going to provide an operational fund for that facility once built. And that's going to provide some tax relief and lessen the burden on public monies so that it can have a dedicated fund. So, we'll continue to build that as well. Wayside Marker Project, we started last summer. So, 44 markers. So, 40 of them were remakes of the ones that were out there. Those were all reviewed by the National Park Service, Adams County Historical Society. And we got refurbished all of those 40 markers and then added four more. So, and then a shout out to Public Works, to Robbie and Bradley for putting, all but four of those are now installed. And that's the four new ones. We need to make sure we're putting those in the right places. The fourth one will go at the new Welcome Center, so it will not be installed until construction happens. And finally, on behalf of Mrs. Butterfield, I'll report on the bid. So, we did meet with the bid last week. We just discussed financials, the pay-by-phone coupon program, voucher program, reviewed all their social media, of course, Christmas Festival, their 19th Century Baseball Festival, and then the Brass Band Festival. It is coming to Steinware Avenue in June this year. So, put that on your calendars. It was also an open meeting. So, we had about a dozen Steinware businesses join the meeting in a similar gallery-style meeting and got a lot of really good feedback throughout the avenue for what's going on there. And our next meeting is April 3rd. Questions? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Chad Allen, Gara.
The only thing I have to report right now is the opening day of the Adams County Farmers Market is closer. Saturday, April 26, is opening day, Adams County Farmers Market at our Gettysburg Rec Park.
All right. Thank you. GMA, Mr. Berger.
Yeah. So, we're finishing up some permitting questions for the Andrews Well. I'm going to send them back to DEP. Once we hear back, we'll be putting that out to bid. Hopefully, that will be sometime in the summer or the fall, early fall. The Interceptor Project, the sewer line, we started that and about three weeks in a digging, got about 250 feet of pipe there on Water Street. So, be working on that for the next nine months or so. And with the Gil, all the water pipes are done. So, that's all good.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you for reporting on the bid. Mayor Freeling and Mrs. Butterfield are both under the weather today, so they couldn't join us. Unless somebody has anything on ACTPA or the COG that was submitted otherwise, okay, we'll skip those. Mrs. Lawson also couldn't be here because of, to speak for Happy and similarly ACTPO. Trail feasibility study? No? Okay. All right. You had the fire and EMS reports in your folders. That will take us to elected officials' comments for the evening. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? All right. I will just say that last Thursday, March 6, was Black Balloon Day, which is a national day of mourning and remembrance for those we have lost to the opioid crisis. Numbers are falling off in a really substantial and hopeful way. We are seeing fentanyl deaths drop nationwide. I've said it a million times, but if anybody out there watching tonight would like to get their hands on Narcan for free, please reach out to me. I will happily supply that and give you, you and your family, a training on how to use it. We want everybody kept safe. Any other elected officials' comments? All right. That's going to take us back to public comment. The second section is not reserved to items appearing on the agenda. We do ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence and please limit your comment to five minutes. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned to executive session.